Because I went over with David, you know, the how to do SES with the apostrophe S. I don't know whether, you know, it's the one, and I recommended it doing it one way. And then when I looked at it, it just doesn't. But anyway, however you want to do the SES thing in the minutes, it's fine with me as long as it's just consistent.
Yeah, it probably doesn't matter.
It probably doesn't matter.
So just, I mean, maybe we can decide. SES stands for solar, could stand for solar energy systems.
It does.
Okay, then, then we don't need the apostrophe S.
Well, oh, I see what you're saying.
If we could be either. As not system, but systems.
Then we can just call it SES.
Right.
So they say SES R? R or SES did, okay.
R, I think, yes.
Yeah, we are.
Is that a solution?
It doesn't.
It doesn't, you know, let's just do SES with no nothing.
Right, I am completely content to use that as the operating principle, and if we ever change our mind, we're done.
Okay.
And so that makes.
Anyway, sorry, David, I think I just.
Find and replace is a wonderful thing.
It is. The only other change that I had in the last minutes, the last, uh, last sentence of the page one, upper limit of 20,000, I think that should be footprint.
Instead of what?
Instead of square feet of panels.
Yeah. Is that right? I don't know, David, you probably know.
I, I put it as panels when I wrote the notes, but I could have.
But what would you prefer, you know, from your point of view?
I, I think Rich is probably right, say, um, footprint, because that would include all your structure.
Right.
And everything, not just the panels.
And, and there's, then you, we don't get into fussiness of what's the angle and this and that. You say, okay, show me a picture of how big it's going to be.
Yep.
Does that sound good to you, David?
That's fine with me.
Anybody, everybody okay with it?
Yeah, so that's, that's the whole field, I mean, all the separate panels, that would be the whole perimeter.
The cumulative, right. And let's say you had, uh, six rows of panels, the structure and the panels all put together.
The basis.
Yep.
The basis, yeah.
Yeah. Not always as easy, you know, if you're talking about a framework for the structure, you know, trying to get that measurement is.
You mean the platform?
Well, you know, you have, um, you know, the panels sit on a framework, not really on a, on a frame.
Right.
And so your, if your frame sticks out, you know, if your frame is four inches wide and sticks out eight inches beyond the ends of the panels, that's.
That's footprint.
Yep, that's just how we get.
But then what about ones that are on a concrete pad with just a post, you know, the trackers?
Then you, you would have 20,000 square feet of panels.
Right, okay. So, let, I mean, I think we're talking about minutes here.
Yeah, let's just get the minutes.
And I think we'll come back, that's a really good question, Tim.
So, um, all, all, is that all anybody have? All those in favor, I'd like to move the minutes. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay.
Actually, John, do you want to, does it need, was Avery doing that?
You don't mean, we're just discussing, there's no voting, so there's no.
Okay.
And also.
David is the, David is the.
David is the missing one and you can't do anything.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, um, let's get right to the SES. Do people prefer to do Rich's draft or Tim's CUP criteria? First.
Would you send that?
Yeah.
David, I think David sent that out.
Yeah, he emailed it.
Left the meeting in the last week.
Yeah, the week before that. Well, here, you can share mine.
Here, I can, if you give me a second.
I totally got warned here.
Oh, oh, it's the scanned document.
It's that thing that I wrote by hand, Rich, it just, you know, someone missed my notes.
I, I looked at that briefly and then.
All right, I will, it sounds like you studied it in class.
I was busy writing up the.
Oh, please. All right, so what do people want to do first?
How about the remember?
Yeah, no, that's, oh, you mean Rich's?
Rich's.
Okay, sure, all right. So, um, let's get started. I had a question on the very first thing that wasn't even something that you've changed. But, um, you know, the solar energy system says a device or design feature. And my question is, what does that mean, or a design feature?
It could be a shingle, or I don't know, it could be a shingle.
But that, I mean, a design feature is a, I mean, a device? I think that's just confusing.
So it just says a feature of a structure that relies upon sunshine, just put it as a feature.
A feature?
Yes.
I could move that.
Because it could be, it could be that it's siding, it could be that it's jiggle, it could be a, you know.
It's a gavel.
Or it could be a device.
Device and design.
And design, or design.
Okay, so, so we're just going to the feature.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, and then, and the same thing, I had a same sentence, and another question. Where it says, if appropriate to the technology, what does that mean?
You got to do this right.
Because we have to know what it means if we're going to have.
We should have probably an and/or. Because my solar energy system can't store, but it collects and then it distributes.
Okay, so and/or.
And/or store.
That's another good solution. And then we can get rid of that?
Yeah, yeah, yep. And we don't need appropriate, yep.
Okay. And then with the first thing, their roof mounted solar energy system, solar energy system that is attached to a building. I saw that you moved.
I did, and so, so I.
So just let me ask the question, the question, or make the comment. These are, those, these are listed under conditions, but I didn't see that as a, as a condition.
Yes, okay, and I, I, just let me modify that.
Since?
Uh, yeah, just like actually an hour ago.
Okay.
Because I, you know, I had, I turned it froze and I have to look at it and update it. So, um, uh, that's an interesting, that's an important comment, but we'll, we'll come to my modification. I propose to keep going.
Okay, good.
Okay, so hold it, what was it, what was?
What, what was I saying?
Yeah.
So in the first, um, dot bullet.
First bullet, yeah.
First bullet. The original thing, the, the, what we had for roof mounted solar energy system, is a solar energy system that is attached to a building, roof mounted SES are not considered to be individual structures, but may modify the building footprint or height of a structure on which they're mounted. I thought that should just stay there.
Right, okay.
But because when you get to D, which are the conditions.
Yep.
I is not a condition, it's, it's.
Right.
A definition.
Right.
So, in fact, the change I made pretty much addresses what you just said. So, uh, I, I changed it to say in, in Roman I, uh, roof mounted solar energy systems are not considered to be individual structures, but if they modify the building footprint or height of the structure on which they are mounted, the resulting structure must satisfy the requirements of the ordinance. So, if you just stick it up and it doesn't make it a whole lot higher, or it doesn't make it any bigger footprint, it's fine. If it's, if it sticks out or sticks up, then the resulting structure must satisfy the requirements of the ordinance. That's, that was the.
Yeah, that's what we said.
I think that, that addresses your, I think that addresses your concern.
Okay, so what does everybody think?
Uh, he's made it into a condition, otherwise it was not a condition. But I, I'm not sure that this definitional stuff should be in the conditions. I think it should be up with the definition.
See, that's what I thought. I would actually recommend putting it in its own section, you know, having a solar energy section. You know, you have the definitions, you have, say, in, um, 442, that it is allowed as an accessory use. And then you have, you know, like senior housing, you have your own section. It is really difficult in the zoning ordinance, having to track through the ordinance to try to find everything.
So are you saying to move, to take it out of the accessory use section?
Yeah, it seems to me all those things are, you know, you, you could change the accessory, or, um, D, if solar energy systems are allowed as an accessory use on a lot, if they meet the, the conditions of section.
I think you're making it more, more roundabout if you refer to another section. I would just go here, because there they are, you don't have to go someplace else.
Well, the, the reason I would only suggest go some, or have another place, is if somebody is looking in the ordinance specifically to find solar, if somebody look at, uh, shore land and try to track through the, the ordinance, the definition of shore land, you have to go through about three different.
So, and don't we have some things in the definition section where they, you know, they give the definition and it says, see page?
Why can't we just put it in the index or something? Index of words defined, so we have, we're putting the definition of SES into definitions, and then we add SES to the back here where we have solar energy and then it's, you know, on these pages.
Those, uh, that index is an automatically built index, it's not something that, um, is created. I don't know if we can actually edit to say, you know, so you, you're going to have, um, you know, anywhere you have SES, that would, could be pop, pop up in that index.
What about a capitalized SES?
Yeah, um, no, that's fine.
So probably, yeah, so we'll just put it in the capitalized one, I mean, I.
From my experience, people really get annoyed having to bounce around trying to find things when it's.
I agree, but I don't think that.
So, and if we're gonna, so we're saying we're going to have these definitions in the definition section?
Yes.
So, why can't we, in that, in the, well, we'll have SES, see page, and you know, we'll give the definition, and then see page.
I'm, I'm going to raise another objection that is trying to maintain that page number.
Oh, good point.
As we go forward.
See accessory use, um.
I mean, we don't do that in any other place.
I think, I think there's a.
Special acceptance as we.
Okay, well, Varian says that too, but that's like kind of major, and I guess senior housing has Article 13, but, I mean, the whole premise is this is just a used accessory to something else, and I, 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 anyway, I'll proceed. I like it the way it's organized, and if everybody else feels differently.
I, I, I agree with Vicky, that is, having just in part D is, it's all in one place, it's not, it's not strewn across multiple pages.
Well, but we are going to have the definitions elsewhere.
Oh, sure, 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 right.
Yeah, yes, Article two.
I, I want to emphasize that the solar energy system's definition, I want to have the individual bullet points underneath it. It's not the style that we do for.
Okay, you lost me, what are you talking about?
So in the definition section in Article two, at some place it's going to say solar energy systems, all the words that you see there, we tend, I don't want to have a separate alphabetized.
You're saying you'd like it like this?
I'd, I'd like to see exactly like this, because roof mounted will be separate from solar, large, small solar.
So, how does everybody feel about that? It won't, it won't be alphabetized, but everything would go under solar energy system. I think it makes sense, because some people don't have to look up each different component.
But it, it could have like an ABC, like the definition of skiing facilities has ABC.
Yeah, that, that, that would be fine.
So, you know, we could have ABCD.
ABCD.
Okay, that sounds great. You know, I'm going to drag out my copy of this.
And, and I, I, you know, Vicky used, and it was my, my thought too, that, that roof mounted thing should, should stay in the definition. If you want to say something else about it, you know, then, but we should have that definition available at the beginning. So I would add back the, the other stuff. And then, then let's.
Roof mounted is going to be in Article two.
What?
Well, the definition of roof mounted.
In A, to the right, in A, right. So just put that other language at, at that language.
And so do we really mean that if it's attached to a building, it could be on the front or the side wall? And do you think we should say to the top of a building?
Um, well, but it's a roof.
Yeah, well, it says it to a building, okay, so it doesn't say it needs to be on the top of the building.
Attached to the roof of a building.
Yeah, that'd be pretty.
That's pretty specific.
Yeah, but say, for example, uh, say, for example, you have a situation where there's a bump out with a little roof, and could they put it on that, or does it have to go on the top?
Well, is it the roof?
They say roof.
Well, if it's part of the roof, they can put it on.
Okay, put it anywhere on any roof, okay, that's fine with me.
Okay, any other questions about this definition?
So, back when we were doing this in November last year, we had the roof mounted solar energy system. Is, I kind of liked the definition that we had there, although it didn't say attached, who just needs to say that it's a solar energy system that is attached to the roof of a building.
Right.
And then roof mounted SES is not considered to be individual structures, but may modify the building footprint or height of the structure on which they're mounted.
Well, we have that separated into, like, that's more of a regulatory feature, and, I mean, we try as much as possible to keep definitions in definitions, describing it, and then as you regulate it, it would be in the regulatory.
So you mean, so that would come under condition?
Well, in fact.
Because that's the only regulatory part.
That's the reason that I moved the modifying the footprint to the height of the building into section D.
Right.
Because it is.
Yeah, it'd just be good to have.
Because it is a regulatory thing, not a definitional thing.
All right, so you put, are not considered to be individual structures, but may modify the building footprint or height of the structure on which they are mounted.
Well.
Yeah, but.
But only if.
Yeah, so I, I think, just to be clear, that should go into A, and then anything, we can repeat it, you know, if, the, the building foot or of a structure, whatever, the, the conditional thing, just add language about the conditional thing. So, let me see if this makes sense. Roof mounted solar energy, solar energy system that is attached to the roof of the building.
I think if you stop there, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll take it back. So, if you're adding it here, what is the condition?
Well.
He has, he's got another phrase or.
Okay, so add, add the phrase.
So in, in I, in, in roof mounted solar energy system, the first line is, is the same, they're not considered to be individual structures, but if they modify.
The building footprint or height. If they.
Uh-huh. Uh, modify the building footprint or height of the structure on which they are mounted, and then the new wording is, the resulting structure must satisfy the requirements of the ordinance.
Right. Resulting, hold on, structure.
I think it must conform.
Must conform, sure, sure, sure.
The.
Must conform to the ordinance?
Is it dimensional, dimensional control?
Sure, I mean.
To the.
You know, yes.
The dimensional controls of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would include, is that, this was one of my questions, since it's part of the ordinance, it would include the 35-foot height limit?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, so we don't have to.
We don't have to feel that.
Right, yes.
Okay. So, what do we go back to B now?
Yes, I think back to B. We, um, I, I came up with, I think, a better word.
For what?
In B, instead of talking about a combined footprint, uh, somebody here said cumulative footprint, and I like that word better.
Yeah, I, I think that's better, I agree.
And that's the same thing in C, that also has a cumulative footprint.
Where are B and C in that?
Oh, we, we.
Right here, where the bullets are.
Bullets got turned into A and C.
You were the one who changed.
You had a great.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We've already done that.
Oh, okay, little A, okay, yeah, yeah.
So cumulative in B and cumulative in C.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
And then, and then I'm happy with the words for D, but nobody else has said anything, so I'll shut up for a minute.
Okay. So, um, I think that we all need to be, to feel comfortable asking stupid questions, so I'm going to do one. When we say the system may be composed of one of several sets of panels, is it, do we want to say which are considered to be a single structure, is that right? Uh, B.
B, okay.
B. The system may be composed of one or several panels which are considered to be a single structure. So why are we saying that?
Is it because they have the cumulative footprint?
Right, but we're, we've already said that, why do we need to?
I think we can just.
It's just a little confusing, they're not a single structure.
Right.
They're, they're being treated.
Treated.
As a cumulative structure like everything else on.
I see, I see.
They're actually separate structures, but we care about the.
The cumulative.
Okay, so we can.
Just make that out.
One or several set of panels, period.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good.
I had.
Yeah, please.
Comment. I found the, the wording here a little different than I've been seeing it elsewhere, where, where we're saying, where Rich has indicated, uh, a solar energy system is mounted on the ground.
Where are you looking right now?
Well, I can be, here you go. I guess I'd prefer, just because it seems like the ordinance that I see everywhere is, they all refer to them as, is ground mounted, as opposed to mounted on the ground.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good.
Okay.
And if you were to do that also for C and D.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So, a solar energy system that is ground mounted, with a combined, okay.
And then I had another.
Good.
Comment, because it seems like we're probably going to end up having a long discussion about what is the footprint.
God.
And I did see something, I don't know which, where it was, what community, but they, they had a, they were calling something solar footprint. And, and I think if we were to define the solar footprint, it is, it's measured by the drip line of the panels. But it seemed like that might be a good term to put in, because they're, you know, we're getting confused with, you know, footprint, um, of the panel versus footprint of the drip edge of the panel, and, so I was going to suggest a fifth item.
And B?
E, suggesting that the solar footprint of a ground mounted fixed solar energy system shall be measured by the drip line of its solar collectors, unless another part of the system has a greater footprint, in which case the greater measurement shall be used. And that's actually the language that we had earlier.
Right, right, right. But that would be fine with me.
So, yeah, the, I mean, the reason, the reason to include that language is if David would have trouble administering what.
For people question.
Yeah, they want to know what, what is the footprint?
Yeah, what is the footprint?
Right.
We don't have a definition.
As opposed to like the footprint of the land in between the panels and everything else, I mean, this actually.
This delineates specifically what we're talking about.
So this is the area delineated by the perimeter of, the cumulative area delineated by the perimeter of. I mean, I don't want to say those words, but this is what we're talking about, that you draw a line around the, the feet, and, right, and, and is, you know, is David, are you comfortable with drip line?
I'm comfortable with drip line, you know, to me.
So, yeah, just, so just, we're saying that, let's say you have four tracking panels and they're 20 yards apart. And they take up, they're in a hallway, so we're just saying that the footprint is just the drip line of those panels, even if they're.
Correct.
Always, yeah, okay.
You mean, and you think that we're not including the land in the, because that's, that's what we decided at some point.
I just want to make it just be clearly.
So could you, are you just picking it up from the pre-existing language?
Yes.
And, and where is that, just so that, that's the ground mounted? In the old one?
In the old one, it is.
From Rich's October 28th one?
No, 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 from, I'm, I'm assuming you're talking about the original.
It's from one.
The one from the town meeting in 2022 that never got there.
Right, so, um, looking, I'm looking at one from January 20th, 22th.
I'm looking at March 22.
Okay, uh, D.
Well, wait a second, look, Rich, you had the language.
I'm not sure, I, I've probably missed some of those meetings.
Could you just read it and maybe I can find it? What, what's the title of it?
Well, at this time, it was D, um, I, uh, double I. This was back in November, early on.
And what does it say?
And it's.
Oh, here it is, it is, tell me if this is it, the building footprint of a ground mounted fixed solar energy system?
Yes, SES.
Shall be measured by the drip line of its solar collectors unless another part of the system has greater footprint, in which case the greater lot coverage measurement shall be used.
Correct.
Okay, and that would apply to both.
That would just be for a ground mounted fixed solar energy.
What about the tracking?
Well, the tracking, where we have that in D, where it says the footprint shall be computed at 70% of the total panel area.
Okay, but in this old one, we have similar language to I, which maybe we should have, you know, to be consistent, if we're going to have E, D should, should be the old definition we had, which is the building footprint of a ground mounted tracking solar system shall be determined to be 70% of the total surface, well, we could say, whatever, of the solar collectors unless another part of the system has greater footprint, in which case the greater lot coverage measurement shall be used.
That's pretty clear.
Yes, I think so, um, I guess I would, I would say yes, let's, I'm happy to embrace both, both those points as E and F.
All right, so the old, the old, oh, God, D.
Roman numeral I.
D2 is.
Oh, yes.
Is, is now D.
Is E.
No, because that's a tracking solar, it's D2, and D is the tracking solar, see?
I was going to put.
You want to just reverse them?
No, I was going to put Roman numeral I and double I after the, the four flavors.
Okay, but, but isn't, yeah, but D is already, the, the new, this little D from this, the section you did, is really, uh, it's redundant to the old capital D2.
Uh, hmm.
Yeah, kind of sense.
Well, other than.
Other than the first sentence.
Other than it's introducing the tracking solar energy system.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, so then let's take, okay, then let's do what Rich is saying, with, we'll do D, we'll have D, and then we have one and two, and then we can take out the last sentence of, of this D.
Yeah, the footprint shall be computed at 70%, right?
Okay, does that, does that compute?
Yes.
So we're, we're just basically taking this, D1 and 2 here.
And moving them over.
Yeah.
Old, old D1.
And I would, um, I guess I'd want to say, the, I don't know if the word building footprint is necessary, but the, the footprint of a small solar energy system or a large solar energy system shall be measured by the drip line.
Okay, where would we put that?
Uh, that, as an alternative to the first line. Uh, that, as an alternative to the first line of the old D one. Instead of talking about a ground-mounted fixed solar energy system which is no longer defined, we just say the, the footprint of a small SES or a large SES.
How about of an SES, period?
Well, except there's roof mounted and.
Oh, right, 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 yeah, yeah, you're right. And I, I agree, we don't need building in there, do we?
I don't really know what it means.
Do we need it?
Right.
Okay, so go ahead, Rich, the footprint.
The footprint of a small solar energy system.
What's, is small or large with it, because then we have to say it twice.
Can, can you do that, or is it, I mean, I mean, it's very clear what it means, a small or large solar energy system.
SES?
Yes. Shall be measured and then the rest of it can be the same.
Small or large solar energy system, so. But do we, we do have to say ground mounted, don't we?
No, because they're, they all are defined as ground mounted. See, a, a small solar, solar edge, a small solar energy system is a solar energy system.
Right, right, okay, good, good, right, good. All right, so are we good with that?
Could somebody just replay what you just said, the footprint of a small or large?
The footprint of a small or large solar energy system shall be measured by the drip line of its solar collectors, unless another part of the system has greater footprint, in which case the greater lot coverage measure.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're, we're making progress. Okay, so now we go to the next page, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we, we have solar energies are followed, is, except, our lot is an accessory use, and a lot if they meet, I would say the following conditions.
Okay.
Is that okay with people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I think we already got into this, roof-mounted solar energy systems are not considered to be individual structures, but if, what, but if they modify.
But if they modify the building footprint or height.
Well, it's, it's just a weird structure.
Oh.
Roof-mounted solar energy systems are not considered to be individual structures, maybe that should be.
This is a sentence.
A sentence.
Stop right there, okay.
If they modify the building footprint or height of the structure on which they are mounted, the resulting structure must conform to the nunchuck controls of the ordinance.
Yep.
Good, all right. Second one, the highest point of any part of a solar energy system shall be no more than twenty-one feet measured vertically from the ground.
Now, do we need to say the highest point of any ground?
Because you're. Yeah, we.
If it's over twenty-one feet, then.
We, we did it, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Right, I think, I think we need to add that.
Ground mounted, yeah, I agree.
And we just sort of threw out that a small solar energy system is a, is ground mounted. And we didn't feel the urge to define it better, we don't think to define it better.
Where are you, what are you talking about?
No, I'm just saying, um, uh.
Back in the.
The highest point of any ground-mounted solar energy system can be no more than twenty-one feet, but we haven't defined ground mounted, but in the definition of, for example, a solar, a small solar energy system, it's an energy, solar energy system that is ground mounted with a combined computer footprint, blah, blah, blah. So we've already assumed that people know what ground mounted means.
Well, when we have clear language, you know what that means.
Yeah, okay, good.
And I don't know what.
So, again, and going back to D, we had a ground mounted to B and C, but I'm just noticing.
And D.
Oh, and D, okay, so. All right.
Good, I accept.
So is this, this is okay, two?
Two, yes.
And, and the, the measured vertically from the ground, is that, you, you know what that means, David?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just, I'm gonna throw this out there because it just occurred to me and as an audit that it could happen, what if you had a tracker that was mounted to a building?
Um, okay, so it can't, the, I mean, I'm just.
Based on this?
Based on this, that, that tracker would be treated as, as not a roof mounted, it would be treated as a ground mounted. I believe it would be treated as a ground mounted tracker.
Yeah.
And because it's not on the roof.
No, but it.
Well, if it was mounted on the roof, it would probably, it would be, it would be.
It would be roof mounted.
Yeah, it's okay if it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet.
Oh, interesting.
Just throwing it out there for discussion, that's all.
So I, I would say, unless we wanna specifically define, you know, address that situation, anything that isn't roof mounted is considered, uh, ground mounted.
Uh-huh.
And if.
I'm just looking at your, your D for the definition, you know, tracking solar energy system. It specifically says it's mounted to the ground, yeah?
Yeah, so I, I guess there's an argument to define, oh, God.
No, 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 we don't need to define that, if it's on the roof, it's on the roof.
If it's not on the roof.
Part of the structure, yeah.
That's right, and that's.
It's ground mounted.
I've got a single-story home and I could put a tracker on my roof of my house, and it would still be less than thirty-five feet.
Right. Oh, yeah, easy.
Yeah, 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 I know. I don't have any other place to put it in my lot, so, yeah, I should put it on. That'll look good, I'd get really, actually good coverage.
All right, so, to address David's, David's issue, because, I mean, we, we understand. So, so, um, do we wanna address that specifically, or do we just wanna?
I think, you, looking back at A, your roof-mounted solar energy system is, that, that's attached to a building.
The roof of a building.
Yeah, so it's.
So that's not.
See, you could have, you could have a tracker on the roof of your building, as long as it.
It must be thirty-five feet, yeah.
Okay, so that would, we got two, and now we're going to three. I would say we'd do the ground mounted here too, as, as a ground mounted, or is that, or am I wrong here? Solar energy system in the Line Common District or the Line Center District shall not be located, it should be ground mounted.
Ground mounted, yeah.
Well, but if it's on the roof, it's behind the face of the building.
Then it's roof mounted. But that, then it's roof mounted, it's no longer ground mounted.
But, I mean, we don't have to add that in there, because if it's on the roof, it's by definition not located in the area.
In three?
Yeah. See, if it's.
Okay, hold on, so, so, well, let's do it without the ground mounted.
Before, before we go, look any harder at this, I intentionally fluffed this definition and a little, to see if anybody twigged to it.
Yeah.
But, uh, so, I.
Say what you're saying, say what you wanna say.
I said, it shall not be located in the area between the front setback and the nearest building.
And I, I put in a note that said, didn't we talk about the side setback?
Well, at the front setback corner, there are two front setbacks. And, um.
Okay.
And so, we, we already have defined a front setback, so we don't have to get into, um, all kinds of new definitions. So I, I, I'm hopeful that that serves.
So what was it? What, what did you fluff there?
Well, just.
What did you take out?
I, no, I didn't, I didn't, I just said, I'm gonna use the definition of the front setback and the nearest building.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
And if everybody's okay with that, then we don't have to define the front yard and the side yard and, and all these other things that.
Well, it's already fine, um, so, okay, so what about, I'm just saying, my front setback is in my neighbor's yard. Because it's one of those average of the five closest buildings, and my front setback isn't even on my lot, so.
So it's in the street?
No, it's, it's in the Stadheim's side yard.
The, the, in the Line Common District, you take.
The average?
No, it's not the average, it is the mean of the mean. So you basically take all the setbacks of the five buildings on the, the, the lot, on the same side of the road, list them numerically, from high to low to high, and take the middle one.
Well, that's the median.
That's the median, sorry, median, so, sorry, not the median.
Okay.
And so.
So how does this geometrically work for you?
It doesn't geometrically work.
Yeah, I'm just saying, what does that mean for my building?
Yeah.
So I'll be located in the area between the front setback and the nearest building, so that means I couldn't put it between the front setback and my neighbor's house, but I could put it anywhere up on my, I could put it anywhere on my side or your, but I think that there's probably other, I don't know, in the Line Common District, just because we look at the front setback differently than we do just, oh, it's ten feet back, whatever, meaning to think about what is the consequence there. I don't know that there's anybody else that has the funky situation that I do, right?
Isn't your front setback on the roadside?
No, it's not, it's behind my house, off my lot. My lot is long and thin, and I have Gary Frasher's house, and the Stadheim's house, and I think the other structures are their garage, Gary's garage, and then.
Yeah, so it's buildings, not, or is it?
Right, so.
How are we defining front? I mean, like, I don't.
I think that's the issue.
The backside, the backside of common, all those houses, I consider the front between the road, you know, the backside of common, road and the house.
In those cases, that would, would work out.
Right.
But in cases where you're off that front common, um, and the house is very in-depth, it's very easy to have a front setback that is beyond your lot lines.
Right, so Christine Taylor's house is way back, um, and she would be.
All right, so, so, so how, what do we wanna say?
So, so your point, you're poking holes in this, and that's okay.
Of course it's okay, that's okay.
I'm not in the Line Common District.
Yes, you are.
Oh, yeah, okay, well, and I could put it anywhere because mine.
Right, but what do we want?
Well, I'm fine with that anywhere.
The other thing, reading that, is it should not be located in the area between the front setback and the nearest building. So if you look at the area.
You might have another building on your, on your own property. But you might, you might have another building on your own property.
True, it could be your garage.
But it doesn't say you can't put it in the front setback, you can't put it in the area between the front setbacks.
So this is not good enough.
We need to know what we wanna say here.
Yes, okay.
And, and why wouldn't, going back, what, why wouldn't we say the ground-mounted solar energy system?
We should, we should put the ground mounted.
Okay, so now we need to, to define this, this front.
Well, I mean, not to be stupid, but I don't understand how we're defining front, I mean, the front of the house is where the front door is? Or is the front of the house?
Well, somebody could build a house without a front door.
No, it's, the front door could be on the side of the building.
Right, so where, how we define.
Well, that's our job.
It's the side of the building that faces the public road is the front.
Okay, there you go.
And that's just like, so is your front setback.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought, but then your house.
My house, I have a front. My front is, but how they calculate where the front setback is puts my setback behind my house.
Okay, but let's, but what you just said dispenses with all of that. We're saying that the front, is the front setback a legal term?
Yes.
Yep.
Actually, it's a road setback, which is.
Is it the road setback?
Yeah, 'cause you can't.
And is that a legal term? And what is, what does it say?
Depends on the, look at section five.
Page eleven.
Yeah, page eleven has the definition.
So let's look at the definition. Road. Where is it, road, what?
Page eleven in the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, oh, just setback, okay.
Yeah.
So why don't we just call it the road setbacks?
Because I think.
Shall not be located in the area between the road setback and something else.
Yeah, so, but you're saying like.
Well, that's fine, because my, that, that means I have the whole area of, I mean, the road setback and the front setback are the same thing, which is just called road setback here, because that's the language our ordinance uses. But what I can't do is put it between my neighbor's house and that front setback mine, so I can put it anywhere around my house, including my front yard.
So is that what we want?
That's great for me.
Well, we're not, we don't, no. We're not concerned about you.
I know.
I mean, we are, but you know.
I know, but I, I don't.
So what do we want?
It does not address my situation.
What do we want?
And I think what you mean is that, uh, well, I think building on the property, um, in the one case, um.
It's what we mean between the road and the house and that building?
Yeah.
And that's what we really mean.
I, I think you need to go away from the road setback, because the road setback, um, has a specific definition, and depending on the district, again, bounce back from the definitions and go to section five thirteen on page thirty-nine, and it gives you a little more, um, you know, section C is the.
Three line setbacks provided.
So we, I mean, there is such a thing as like a building face, um, which is the front of the building or whatever, you know, the, the part of the building that's facing the public road, and that's a fairly common, you know, kind of zoning type of definition.
It, it seems to me if you said, um, between the road and the face of the, or the, uh, face of the building, or side of the building facing the road. What?
Would it be the face of the building nearest to the road?
Yeah, facing the road.
Facing the road.
Facing the road.
And that, you know, again, if you had two roads and you would have two faces facing a road.
Right.
And so.
You'd have to comply with both, if it's a corner lot, you'd have to comply with that on both.
The lime in, not, yeah, lime in, you know, it's on a corner lot, so we've got to.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause I think that's what we're trying to say.
The church could not put a SES up.
So what's the language?
Well, they should, they should have a, um, they should have a tracker on top of these people.
That's above thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet, yeah.
So, so what do we want here?
Right, I think you, you're, again, go away from the road, um, setback, because that just.
Should we refer people to five one three C?
I wouldn't.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just say between the public road and the building front? Isn't that what we mean?
Yes, and is it, is it any particular building?
Yeah.
Front? Is it, uh, the main building front, is it, um, the primary structure?
Yeah, the principal building front.
Principal building.
Principal building.
I think the principal building is the, I don't think you're gonna have many cases where you have a principal.
Earl Stroud could put one between his garage and the back of the common, 'cause that's not the prin- principal building.
Yeah.
Well, one, you mean, you can do one.
Well, this isn't even the store, so honestly.
You wouldn't see it from anywhere.
Yeah.
That would be in the back.
That would be in the front, that's what we're talking about, he, 'cause he, his principal building is his house and accessories is his garage. And then also, what Lori Lawtworth's got the same situation, would have connected garage to her house?
Well, if it's connected, I'm gonna consider it one building.
Okay, so, and even though it's not the principal, yeah.
It's all one building, it's principal, yeah.
Okay, so maybe the principal building front does work, um.
David, if her, if Lori's garage wasn't attached, it was six feet from the house, and she could put one between the garage and the common.
Yep.
But I don't think we want that, I mean, that's what we're trying to avoid.
So any building.
Yeah, and, I mean, as a practical matter, um.
Any building front, one a lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, any building, and, and the front of any building.
Any building front. The front of the building.
Yeah, so why don't we just say, and, and, public road and the front of any building? Front of a road. On the lot. Okay, well, let's, let's leave that for now.
Would you read that?
Uh, yeah, the front of any building on the lot, okay, so, what if it, what if you have a garage that's setback, and, and then, you know, and then there's no building between the garage and the public road?
The front, right.
But you wanted to put it.
But that's, that would still be.
I'm saying any building here.
That would still be consistent with what I, I think the board is after, which is, you don't want one in the front. That's, that's still in the front.
Okay, so even if the garage is setback.
Even if it's pushed back, it's still a front.
All right.
You, what people, I, I think what people were expressing was, they want the common area, they don't wanna look at these in the common area, if you put them behind your house, they're fine with it.
So my next question would be, um, what happens when you have a, um, and I can, you have a case up here where you have a house that is setback further than the garage?
Right.
And there would be space between the house behind the garage, um.
But then that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be between the front of the garage and, and the public road?
But it would be between the front of the house.
Well, we're, we're not, it's not the house, we're saying between any building and, and the, and the, in the road.
Okay, so it's, that the between, the between part, so you're, I'm just, I'm trying to think of how I'm going to.
Right.
Have to tell people that, um.
You can't put it in between there, because.
Yeah, so if it's behind the garage, but in front of the house.
Unless we wanna, and I think what, you know, this is, would be a problem, unless we wanna make a distinction between the houses around the common, which we were talking about, you know, with, with, before with, uh, senior housing, which is said, we.
I'm concerned also with the, you know, creating spot zoning on those.
Right, right. So, I, I think this is at least a good working, I wouldn't just call it working, you know, an advanced working definition that, that we're gonna have to go through this again, obviously.
But we are saying this only applies to the Lime Common and Lime Center.
That's right, that's right. Because those, that's what people are sensitive about.
Could, could you read this again?
Sure. Um, a ground ma- a ground mounted solar energy system in the Lime Common District or the Lime Center District shall not be located in the area between the, the public road and the front of any building on the lot.
Okay.
Want me to read it again?
I got it.
I got it.
So we, we might be able to refine that language, but at least it tells us what we think we think.
Right, and, 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 that feels pretty good, that's basically, we don't wanna see it from the public road in the Lime Common District.
Well, like, people in, in the town have expressed they don't wanna see it.
I mean, we are, yes, this, this pretty much expresses it, um, without saying, I don't wanna see it, because what if I can't, peer behind your house from the road, like.
Well, we're just trying to put it.
This is good, I like this.
Okay, so, so let's go to four.
There's nothing about visual here, we're just talking about.
Yep, yep.
So four.
Can, can I just ask a question like this, so, um, so, this, it would still be visible from the road if it's on the side of the house?
It could be.
I'm gonna give you an example of, if you go up here, just past this fence, the first house.
Yep.
It sets way back, um, on the lot. So there's a huge area, open area, that would be ideal for solar. But they would have to put it next to their house, and then their house kinda backs up to the woods, so they're not, there's, there's no place back there before the lot ends. So they would be limited to that small section next to their house, and not.
Not in front.
Yep, which, again, that's what people.
That's what people seem to be concerned about.
Well, in my house, you can see between my house and my garage.
Yep, right.
So the fronts are both where they are, and it, you know, just locating it behind the front of my garage doesn't put it behind the garage, and it doesn't put it behind my house either. It's located in between where people can see.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I think your points, we'll take them, Vicky, we're not worried about the, the hiding the thing. We just don't want it to be like, right there.
Right in front, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so if you, if it gouged in, would be another example where they have the patio, they could put solar trackers, or solar panels right there.
Well, you know, you know that this is gonna come back to bite us.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm bringing up the places that would be.
I know that we're gonna.
Not, not trying to.
Uh, uh, we're, we're gonna have prob, you know, this is always the case, that we're, we're gonna have specific instances where there's a problem. But if, if we are going, if we are trying to reflect the feedback we got, pretty consistently.
Yeah. This is good, this is good.
This is.
I think it's a good, um, compromise between, you know, people not wanting to be able to see them in the Lime Common, Lime, uh, Center districts, and allowing your homeowners to actually have them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel for the people who wanna put up, you know, tracker, or put up ground mounted things, and, and would otherwise have the right to do it, and are not, because they, but that's, that's.
We'll find out what happens.
All right, let's go to four.
Yes.
No large solar energy system is permitted in a location that requires improved utilities on a scenic road. Alternate wording, no large solar energy system is permitted in a location that would require upgrades to utilities on a scenic road.
It's just a difference between upgrade and approved.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know which, you know, stays better legally or whatever.
Well, we could, if we wanted to be, you know, cover every, everything, we could just say that requires, uh, up, upgraded or improved utilities on a scenic road.
What about using the word alteration?
Ooh.
Requires alteration to utilities on a scenic road.
I like that.
That's pretty broad.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Well, what if it's just restraining lines with no, um.
Right, 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 right.
It's not altering what's there, you're just putting in new wires.
Well, it's altering if it's putting in new wires, I mean, they're gonna be heavy wires, but they might not need taller poles, and they might not need to cut trees, well, yeah, we're talking about just the, the utility itself, not the tree cutting, I guess, here. So, yeah, so we're saying, yeah, the wires get replaced, you don't have to trim your trees, and you don't have to put any poles. But we are, you know, they don't have to put in new, uh, new wire.
But that wouldn't be considered alter, alteration?
I would.
Well, if they're putting in new wire, there's a thicker wire, that'll get larger.
That's an insulator to handle the, the heavier.
So what do we want to say? Improved or upgraded or that requires?
Upgrades and alterations.
Well, alterations, we're gonna get stuck, you know, we're gonna get into a problem with that.
Okay.
I think, I think upgrades are a little better than improved.
Okay, yeah, I think so, to upgraded.
Graded utilities.
Utilities.
Yeah.
Okay, and so we'll, we'll cross out the alternate word.
Can I read that back again?
A no large solar energy system is permitted in a location that requires upgraded utilities. Should we say upgrades to the utilities?
I'll just say upgraded utilities.
Okay, on a scenic road, got that?
Good.
Okay, five. Okay, this was a little confusing to me.
Right.
And, and to you, because you put all those question marks. A large solar ener- energy system may be a primary or accessory use on a lot, and require conditional use permit. I, I think we, we wanna stay away from may, well.
I was gonna say, you were a little shallow there.
We, well, but, now we can't say primary or accessory.
Yeah.
So the point of this, but if I recall, is we wanted people to be able to own land and, and put up a system.
Right.
And that would be a primary.
Yes.
So let's just see how we, a large solar system.
And the other thing is, you've got a big parcel, and you got your house on it, and you wanna put up a big system. We, I think we also wanna permit that, as an accessory.
We're not stopping it. They can, people can, we're not regulating use, so.
No, but the, the large systems.
Right.
If you have a, you know, if we go back to the primary use on a lot, you're allowed one.
Right.
And so you're saying that a large, uh, solar energy system, it can be a primary, and it can be an accessory use, you're not saying.
Got it, so I think we need two sentences here. A large solar energy system may be a primary or accessory use on a lot, period.
Right.
Um, a, a large.
So you're leaving may in there?
Yes.
Yeah, because it'd be, could be either or. Um, a large, and, and, or, I guess we could stay with that, and shall require a conditional use per- permit, period, you know, because whatever your use, so shall we say and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, shall require.
And shall require conditional use permit, period. Do you want that read back?
So I think it says, I, let me, let me see if I got it, a large solar energy system may be a primary accessory use on a lot, comma, and shall require a conditional use permit.
You, you obviously didn't use the S I Hayakawa method of, of punctuation.
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, I could tell.
I always put a comma in when I stop for a breath.
Okay, that's a lot of commas, okay, so either, yeah, so, yeah.
Maybe a primary accessory use on a lot and shall require.
Okay, so, we've, we've at least got that down to.
And does, uh, does a conditional, uh, use permit, um, is required from the planning board?
From the planning board.
Or from what board?
From the, yeah, a, a conditional use permit from the planning board.
From the planning board.
Thank you.
Do we need to say that here, and would, would the conditional use not language that definition?
It, it may, but it, I think it's just very clear.
Okay, yep.
Um, all right, and then we go on to Tim's work.
Some of Amy's copies of that printer, just pull it up here.
I have printed copies on the printer.
Okay, they're actually.
They're sitting on the printer.
Then I would take one of those, thank you.
Thank you, Tim, for, especially since you wrote it out in hand.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, this just came.
Yeah, I, I, but I, I think that these are, these are really good, um.
I sort of picked out the ones that I thought were.
You picked out your favorites.
Yeah, the more applicable.
So, so, Tim, I'm, I'm assuming that you pulled this from the keen.
A lot of these are keen, yeah, I recognize all the keen, too.
Yeah, a lot of keen and some, yeah, a few from some others.
Yeah.
They just, they seem to make sense, I mean.
So, uh, we're gonna, well, we, we would need, I forgot what we did with the soul, uh, with the soul, with the, uh, senior housing, but we, we would need, oh, yeah, I remember, no, she, the lawyer said you didn't need to, anyway, we need to, if we're gonna have these, we need to put it somewhere, where are we gonna put it?
You don't have to.
Ten, ten point four one, after the special exception. Uh, maybe, it's down about that, because that's for special exception waivers, but all that is zoning board stuff, so I don't know if we wanna.
I don't know, we don't wanna put it there.
So then we might wanna put it in, uh.
Where did, where does it talk about?
Why don't we do it under Article twelve, which is planning board, um, and then we have twelve-ten, site plan review authorization, and twelve-twenty, conditional use for solar energy systems.
Okay.
I don't know.
Where is it, is it?
Right here, yeah, so, yeah, it would be twelve-twenty.
Okay.
Be conditional use.
CUPs for SES.
For SES.
Okay, that sounds like a good.
I don't know.
That's a good start.
Yeah.
All right, so people's comments on these, I mean, we'd have to, we need to make these our own language, I think.
Right.
But what are people's impressions of these?
I liked them, I thought that, um, I thought that maybe we could include almost everything of the keen one, and still be appropriate.
So, are these all the keen ones, or are there the more keen ones?
There's more in the keen, I, I don't have them specifically.
I might have.
One thing I would put in, um, is the inclusion of a secnet.
Okay.
Um, just, you know, you, you need to see what's, so number ten, um. And, you know, I would look at it, you know, when you go through, um, look at your site plan review, um, booklet, and, you know, there are application, there's a whole application process, and I would mimic
Okay, so we need, we need a.
that as much as possible, an application process, you know, saying, here's what you need to supply to the board.
Right.
Um, and, you know, these are great, um, items to, for the board to consider, but, you know, you need to know what's, I personally would like to see a, uh, existing condition and, um, proposed, that way you know, you know, when you talked about the, uh, item six, clearing of existing trees and vegetation, um, you know, if you had an existing conditions and the proposed, then you would know exactly how much is being cleared.
Why don't we just say it's all the same as Article ten in the site plan regulations?
Well, because, you mean, and not have any of this other stuff?
Uh, well, we're talking about what you need to submit, we're not talking about the rules about what you submit. So I'm on the site plan regulations, I'm on page ten, we have, uh, rather than saying the exact same stuff again, and making the zoning work that was longer, to say, the submission shall be the same as what we have here.
Okay, good, good.
And, um.
Same as, as they are.
Right, right, and we have, I mean, to David's point, we have the location areas and inches of all existing proposed buildings, driveways, or that, 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 existing and proposed utilities, um, that are existing and proposed grades, existing and proposed methods handling surface water runoff, so I think it kind of addresses.
I, I think it just, absolutely does, yeah.
So we'll just say all the information in Article ten.
Okay.
And then we can change the information in Article ten if we need to by just the vote of this board in a meeting, if we find that there's something else that we need to have here. And I guess again, to David's point about the vegetation, that would be, um, we did talk about landscaping and buffer areas, large trees, um, in ten point five point eight. So that probably covers vegetation.
Well, but, but we're, we're separating the, the application process.
Right.
From the, the, these other things.
Right, well, I was just trying to say, this does address, like, landscaping in place, and I, and we could have, um, you know, still have Tim's number five.
And si- and si-.
Yeah.
But just for six, you know, if they clearly showed what was being, the areas that are being cleared, you know, that's.
Right.
You know, that's what, uh, that would give the board the ability to, uh, look at number six and, and make a determination.
Exactly, so the, the application process is informational mostly, and although it.
Yes.
Right, it just tells the applicant what it is the board is going to require.
And then, and then Tim's stuff is, um, performance related, right.
And it just, it makes it a whole lot easier if I can give the applicant a, a list and say, here, this is what you need to supply the board, and whether they do it or not is always questionable, but, um, at least I just have a list to, to give them. And whether they do it or not is always questionable, but, um, at least I just have a list to, to give them.
Right, okay. So what else do we want to do tonight with this section?
What with Tim's?
Yeah.
Um, so I only had a couple of comments.
All right, well, let's hear them.
Um, one, I, I wondered, do we need a limitation, this is with regard to number seven, uh, perimeter or security fencing. Can that be located in setbacks?
Fencing is specifically excluded in the zoning.
So there's no limit?
There's no limit, there's nothing.
And would we want to have that maximum height? I mean, I don't know if we want to have it taller, it's the point of that, it's not a visual point, right? You're just saying this is security fence.
Yeah, I thought it was visual, they were putting it in here because they didn't want a fence that was fifteen feet high.
But I think, you know, it depends on the fencing, if you're putting in a fence to, um, hide the, the panels from somebody's sight. You may want to go higher than.
Right.
Eight feet if you're putting in a chain link fence to keep people out with a barbed wire top on it.
Four foot, well.
Well.
Why are we, why are we measuring, why are, why are we limiting the height?
I don't know, I just, I thought, I mean, they got wrong, I was just guessing, they, they had it in there because they didn't want to see a really tall fence, just visual.
Well, if you want to see the tall solar panels, I mean, no one's going to put in a fence that, you know, just to make have a tall fence.
Yeah.
So if it's going in to screen the solar panels, then.
But then it would have to be huge, I mean, it would have to be really high.
It could have to be really high.
Higher than you could actually even build it.
No, no.
Once the panels are twenty feet high.
How big is the, how big is the wall between Texas and New Mexico? Okay?
Yeah.
Right, but you know, I need to.
You can make it any size you want.
But it just becomes so impractical.
But why do we want to, I mean, do we need to limit the height?
Well, maybe for security fencing, we, we should, and then if it's, uh, for visual impact, then maybe, maybe we don't want to specify anything.
Right, but if anybody puts it up for security, they're gonna have to, they'll put it at a height where they think people will feel good. I mean, they have to, which would probably be eight feet, but.
No, it, it doesn't even matter what, what it might be, it's just like, why, why bother? Nobody's going to spend money on a fence that's too tall for that, for their use, right?
Right.
Because it costs more money.
So I don't think you could really go to a height to block out the eighteen or twenty foot high solar.
Well, it depends upon where the road is.
Yeah, that's the sites below your.
Yeah, that's true, but.
But if this is back into somebody's property and they just want to say, I want an eight foot high fence, you know, because, you know, looking up that, you know, they're, they're going to block that out, so, or a twelve foot high.
And if we're only regulating the fence in this situation of a SES.
A large one.
The large SES.
Does that make sense that we're not regulating fences in any other situation?
Well, I think, I mean, I, I take your point, I think it's defensible and no, no pun intended.
Yeah.
It's defensible because it's, it's unusual.
It's unusual, actually.
Uh, no offense.
Untaken.
It's, it's, it's a special situation, but I also agree that it's pretty arbitrary.
Right, yeah, maybe we can just take it.
I mean, we're gonna be reviewing this for like some, uh, general characteristics, I would say.
Yeah, I think, I think any board, I mean, future board or, or this board that is, is, uh, reviewing this is gonna, has criteria where, where they could say, you're not, we're not going to let you build.
Number four, I mean, does number four address what we might have concerns about with an eight foot high fence?
Yeah.
I'd say that that's, that covers it because you do put fencing in there.
I agree.
Take out seven maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, because I think you could.
We don't care how high a fence is, there isn't a point in that, so, you know, it's like, you know, we don't care.
Right.
Whether it's twelve feet or.
Well, but that's not the case, I mean, what Vicki's saying is, is that the board may care and it has, it has a basis in four.
It's addressed.
To address it.
Right.
Well, the, the sevens suggest that, that security fencing is required, I mean, if.
Not unless we say it.
And if, if an applicant comes in here and says, well, I, I'm just putting in, uh, you know, a split rail fence that's three feet high, like Playfield has, the school there.
Yeah, I think, I think.
But the neighbors are saying, you know, we've got kids and.
Yeah, I think we need to say something about that safety.
True. Um. Yeah, because somebody might not want to spend money to put a security fence.
They might not, they might say, well, if they get electrocuted, tough luck, this is a disaster.
I mean, I, I think that, you know, so, I'm thinking of solar energy systems. For crossroads. I, I don't think. There is not fence around them. The structure is very climbable.
Yeah, and.
And it wouldn't surprise me if kids go in there and have checked out how climbable it is.
And then, and then forgetting that specific thing, but someone, you know, if it was, if it was a pretty intense, large SES and there, there's electronic equipment or generators or whatever, we're not going to want kids to have easy access to that. So.
Well, you're gonna have, you know, you're gonna have to have inverters and you're gonna have to have transformers.
Right, right. And that's.
So the wires, so you could touch wires, that's a thing.
Dangerous.
Or you could even just throw a circuit breaker, you know, turn the building off.
Right, so, so I think there's, I think there are two considerations we need to think about. One is, are there inherent dangers in having people wander in here? I mean, I, I'm quite certain that no one would design a system that generates a lot of power that would have exposed surfaces that are dangerous. You know, kids climbing on it would be a pretty bad idea, but I bet, I mean, certainly the guys that work on it don't want to be exposed to hazardous voltages when they're wandering around there. So I think one of the concerns is safety of people who wander in there, and I think they're pretty safe.
Well, I think.
Without, without doing.
I can speak with the.
Okay, let me finish, and then the second piece is you as the owner of the system may not want people coming and. Fussing with your stuff. Flipping the circuit breakers and, and you know, that stuff, so.
Yeah, there, there's a system up in, in Fairleigh, several behind it. They have a small four foot fence that, and then there's another system south of town that's got no fencing around it. So it does vary by accessibility.
But I think, you think that the crossroad, because it's a school, you know, I'd say, you would think they would be consulting.
But they're not, that's.
If they don't put a fence up, then.
I think, I think the issue is they didn't need to, and they didn't. But what we're, we want to figure out is, do we want to have that as a, as a requirement?
You know, and I think that putting a fence around, you know, if you have a, a, a system near a populated area where it could be an attractive nuisance, putting a fence around it makes sense. If you have one further out that is not near where anyone's living, um, maybe not as important. Um, I know that they typically run all the wiring underground to a pole and then go up the, the side of the pole to get it into the grid. That's what I've seen on all those systems, that it's not, so there's not, uh, you know, exposed wiring and typically they'll, even the wires coming out of the system, and I don't know if yours is the same way, it all runs underground. Um, and so there's really no exposed, other than conduit coming out of each of the, the arrays.
So David, I'm assuming that the town would in no way be, be liable, or, you know, if somebody puts in a large system, the town is liable, right?
No, it is, you know, like any other utility.
Right, so in that sense, we think the planning board doesn't have to worry about the town getting sued, so.
Um, I, I think you, more than likely, your driving force for a fence is going to be the insurance company for the system.
And that's the owner, that's the owners, yes, and we have nothing to do with it.
Right, they're, you know, the insurance company is going to look at this.
So let me ask the question this way, can people think of, imagine any circumstance with this, where having the ability to require fencing under the CUP would be a good idea?
I don't know the requiring is, but I think if, if the applicant provides it, I think having a height limit might be desirable from the town's perspective.
For visuals, yeah, we can say if, if a fence is installed, or it can't be higher than something.
Yeah, I mean, Keaton said perimeter and or security fencing shall have a maximum height of eight feet.
Well, that's what you asked, so do we want to put that back in?
Kind of what Tim asked.
So, so I'm gonna ask, um. Why do, why do we need to specify that? I think part of it is, I think part of your concern is you don't want to look at it. Um, and, um, that's kind of the visual impact in, in four. For us to say eight feet and then somebody says, oh my God, you know, my security analyst came by and he says it's got to be eight and a half feet. Yeah, so again, I think it goes back to four gives, gives the board a lot of flexibility. The board can say, okay, well, we think it should be eight, the person says, my, my, my security person says it should be nine feet and we go, okay, we can have a nine feet.
I think, you know, just making it that it is at the discretion of the board.
Right.
Whether you need fencing and the, the look of the fencing.
I'm, I'm reluctant to put the board in the position of deciding whether we need, if somebody needs fencing or not.
I think you're right.
Well.
Well, I think the insurance.
The only reason I, I put that in, in that way is because if the board decides that, you know, based on a, and a butter who says, you know, I'm really, this is really going to interrupt my view, but if I had a fence, I'd be happy.
Or happier.
Happier. Um, it would give the board the flexibility to be able to say, okay, in this case, we're going to, you know, to appease this a butter, we're going to ask for you to put in a screening fence.
Or.
Or a vegetation or.
Or.
And number four addresses that.
Number four addresses it.
And that, that's, I, I don't think it needs to be out of number four, but just having the board have that flexibility to say.
Yeah, I, I think the board should have that flexibility because I can imagine circumstances where it would come up as an issue and it would be good to have that flexibility.
I'm, I'm quite comfortable with the board having flexibility to say visual screening. It's not, it's not, it's less, far less clear to me that a neighbor should be able to say, you need to put up a security.
No, the neighbor can't say that.
Okay.
The neighbor can say, I'm really unhappy about this, and point out why. Then it's the board's role to go, is that neighbor's concerns reasonable?
Okay.
And even if they're reasonable, are they, is it, is it something that the board should address under, under this? Or is it just that it's an unfortunate situation? Um, and I think four is a, is a really nice.
Four is a really good way to say it.
Flexible.
I'm just saying, I, I don't, I'd be happy not having seven there, that.
Well, I think we took seven out.
We took it out.
Yeah.
We did.
So you, you must be happy.
I would, I'm delighted.
Yeah, it's good to win.
Are you okay with it?
There's no win.
I'm.
I, I'm not going to fall on my sword, okay?
Okay, what I don't see here is a safety condition.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, so, um, so it's, it should be like, you know, all solar energy systems, you know, shall be designed, uh, to be safe and, you know, redesigned and.
There's language, I think, I think keen has, has a.
Yeah.
A, a safety clause.
Yep, we need a safety clause.
Goes next to the sanity clause.
I mean, I think the safety clause needs to be first, you know, that's like our number one is our safety.
So up at the top.
Yeah.
Making you safety from, well, I mean.
It's going to be safe so that if children cut through that place to, you know, to, on the way to school.
But I don't think that's our business to really, I mean, if somebody wants to build it, we're not responsible, so.
Well, I think what we need to do is have it, have the ability to require a fence if we want to for safety reasons, not visual impact reasons.
Well, I, I thought the thing, the, the safety issue, as I remembered from, like, I don't know if it was keen, but there were, there were several things made, and most of them had a safety clause.
Yeah.
Which is just a general thing.
Yeah.
Shall be built to, uh, you know, certain standards, it's like.
Let me see.
Yeah, I don't see.
I, I don't see any.
I was going to, I don't have, I thought I had all.
There, there is something about onsite lighting shall be installed for security and safety.
Well, anyway, let, let's just say that we, we want to investigate, we're not going to figure out the safety clause, I mean, we want to include it tonight, but let's say, um, all of us.
Make sure you have a safety.
Should, should take a look at the safety clauses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I respect.
I, I don't, I don't sense the respect at all, really.
Well, I mean, if we're not responsible and if something happens, building, they should do whatever they want.
The, the thing is.
If they want to make a danger, they want to get sued, go for it.
But, um, while not being responsible, it's still, there is still some, uh, possibility that somebody could say the planning board approved an unsafe system.
Exactly.
And it does fall on the planning board.
So here's a very simple safety clause, this is from the New Hampshire model, it says, uh, solar energy systems will not materially endanger the public health or safety.
Okay, that's all we need.
SES.
That's all we need.
Will not materially endanger the public health or safety. And what that actually means, I don't know.
Well, I, I mean, I think what it means is that that gives the board the right to say, is this safe?
Yes.
And, and tell us.
Right, and so you, you talk to the applicant, say, is this, is this designed safely, and they say, oh yeah, I had an engineer sign off.
So, yeah, so you had an engineer sign off and then we can, we can put in our findings, engineer approved, says.
And as far as.
Cover, asking, basically it just covered us for. And it, it covers the town, it, it covers the town too.
It's appropriate.
That's, that's. That it's like, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think if you look at your application, um, requirements, you know, engineer drawings or drawings that are provided, you know, by stamped in, or stamped by an engineer, you know, that you're saying, we want this to be.
And we want, we want to be able to ask the applicant point blank, how can you reassure us that this is safe? And exactly what somebody said, uh, the engineer signed off on it, we get a copy of that and we're done.
I mean, and, and we can do pretty good about it, engineers don't sign off on stuff, it's.
Right.
Oh yeah, they do.
Well, they do, they do, but they shouldn't.
I don't want to hear about that.
It depends on who's paying the bill.
No, it's true, it's true, but, but from our point of view.
We would be covered, yeah.
Well, it, there's only so many levels of, of, of safety that we can possibly, you know, delve into, but, but that's a reasonable level to require.
And it would allow the board to be able to stand back on something if they felt that the neighbor's objections.
Right.
Were, were substantial.
Yeah, right, right. So, but thank you, Vicki, that's a good, good thing. All right, anything else on this?
Yeah, I did have something else.
Keep going.
Now that we, um, have, you know, reference for submission documents, um, and we said everything in Article ten in the site plan regs, the decommissioning plan is a separate submission, and so wherever we say what we must submit, then also needs to say, we also want you to have a decommissioning plan and have that, um, define, you know, like, both of those paragraphs need to go into the submission thing where we have.
You mean, uh, number, number ten?
Right, where we, where we reference number ten, this needs to go to that, and then, uh, the number two. And then, uh, the number two of, of Tim's should become number 10 because it's a requirement. The planning board may require the owner or operator to post a, um, and I would think, letter of credit or establish an escrow account, because I'm pretty sure that nobody wants a bond, and, um, Mitchell, the Mitchell Group at work with that at Hanover, and they say, you know, bonds are not fond to deal with for anybody, and that you want a letter of credit or establish an escrow account. And then four, decommissioning, site restoration, and landscape buffer maintenance.
Wait a minute, where, how'd it get to four?
Well, I had a.
So we're taking out bonds, right, we're just taking out.
I'm taking out bond.
Yeah.
And then, because this then, it just is floating, the board may require that the owner or operator post a letter of credit or establish an escrow account for decommissioning, site restoration, and landscape buffer maintenance, so that there's money in the bank that.
Well, hold on, for, for decommissioning.
Sight restoration.
Sight restoration.
And landscape buffer maintenance, because there's no way if, uh, somebody's, you know, all their cedar trees die.
Right.
If there's a cedar bore or something like that, um, that we'd have a way, we'd have to tell them they couldn't use their solar system or whatever, their solar energy system, and, uh, we wouldn't have any cash available to put in hemlocks because they, you know, they've got to replace the cedar trees.
Right, I, I get it.
So, the town would have the ability to access the letter, the money that's set aside in the letter right with the bank, or to access money in the escrow account to, um, have the landscape buffer maintained. And, uh, that could be done by the town, or the people could just use cash out of their pockets. That would be better than having to call in one of these.
Well, it says may, may require, so.
Right.
Okay, so also in the decommissioning and site restoration section, don't, how do we define abandonment? Or, or when decommissioning is, is required?
Okay, the question is, do we already have an abandonment definition?
I think we do.
I think we do, and so it'd be just the same one that we have, abandoned. The discontinuance of a user structure for continuous period of at least two years with no intent of claiming one's right or interest in it. And it's really hard to prove that, but anyway, that's what we call abandoned in our zoning.
Well, this one, not to use for a twelve consecutive months.
Well, that's different.
That's different than that.
Yeah, and how are we gonna, I don't know how we're gonna know, but, um, it, it seems to me that we shouldn't have two different. But, it's, that's.
So supposing somebody, uh, isn't using it for two years, and, um, they're told, okay, you know, you have abandoned it, and they say, oh no, I, I intend to do it, I intend to.
Well, then we should change this. I think, um, there are, it's a, it's a legal thing about abandonment, and that's a, a question for the Mitchell Group, because I believe that this is consistent with what state law allows you to define it as. And, uh, well, that's page four and.
But it, I mean, that's, that's pretty useless. I mean, all, all a person has to say is, well, no, I, I claim a right.
Well, I'm not using it, but I have an.
Yeah, I have an interest in it. It's, it's terrible.
I don't know that we can change it, and that's just a question.
Well, so that's a question for the Mitchell Group.
For Mitchell Group, and I'm not sure we can, yeah, so.
Well, we're not sure, that's why we're asking.
Yes, that's why we want to ask, but I'm pretty sure that's what we're.
So could you, David, could you ask about, um, a more, uh, an abandonment definition with more teeth?
Do we need to use the word abandonment? Keen didn't use abandonment at all in there, they're just saying that.
Decommissioning?
Yeah, it's decommissioning.
But then we would need to.
Upon the end of the project life or after they're used for a while.
But, but that's, doesn't have any teeth.
Well, no, but I think they have.
And then they also say, uh, the operator shall decommission the panels in the event they are not used for 12 consecutive months. So, I mean, it's pretty easy to find out if, well, I don't know whether the power company can give you that information or not, but.
I don't know either.
But presumably.
You mean, just, just abandon the abandonment?
Abandon, abandon, yeah.
And go, go with that?
I would ask the Mitchell Group when you call them on that, and also just confirm with them that they don't like bonds.
Okay.
Yeah, because bonding is very common in many places, but it's really pain, uh, when, when you actually like to use a bond.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if they haven't, if somebody hasn't used it at all for a whole year.
That's a long time.
Think that they.
Yeah, I don't know how we're, everybody know, but, well, that's, that's an enforcement problem, I guess.
Yeah.
Thanks. Well, well, let, let's start with the, you know, see what, what they say about abandonment, and maybe, maybe they'll give us something that we can use. All right, anybody have anything else on this?
I mean, are these, these systems, this is a large system, so.
Yeah, this is no joke.
Is this, this might be public information or something.
I would, I would imagine that was, with something that big, it would be pretty obvious, one way or another, I don't know specifically.
Yeah.
But it would seem to be pretty clear.
You know, also, I don't know if the power company would be happy to have systems attached to their grid that are not producing anything, you know, are they.
Yeah, I, I don't know what the situation is.
So you might find that, you just look up and say, oh, there's no wire attaching it anymore, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah, you can't lock it, put it up, yeah.
All right, well, we'll see what Mitch, uh, the Mitchell Group says, and, um, take it from there. You got anything else on this?
I thought Tim did a great job.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a little bit of text here about lock coverage.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
Is that relevant?
I don't think that's relevant.
Oh, no, that was, or he's taking some notes about something.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're all that.
We can cross that out.
I ignored it.
So, so.
She might say back that Tim did a good job, you're gonna ignore that part, okay?
No, 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 that, that I knew was not part of it.
It was something else.
So what do we, what do we want to, uh, we, we did a lot of good work tonight on this. What do we want to do, what do we want to come in with next time, and what do we want to leave with next time?
I think we're ready to hopefully have a draft that we can share more broadly.
By, by the end of next time, or, or prior to next time?
I don't see how we can do it prior to next, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to say, oh, share it more broadly, but I think we need to see a final draft before we do.
We do not want to share until we're, we, we are willing to stand behind it to some degree.
So David can send us the revised thing, right?
Do you have? You don't need to send me the, the revised.
Are you, are you looking at me?
Yes, I'm.
Are you looking at me?
I'm not giving the revisions.
Yeah, the other thing is, is I think, uh, maybe our goal for the next time is to say, yes, this is the text we want, and then we go to our friend Hebe and say, can you make this look beautiful so we can mail it out to his people?
Are we gonna do another mailing?
Well, I don't know, I mean, you know, or.
I mean, well, let, let, all right, let's consider, do we, are we gonna do that, that exercise again, or are we gonna say, we're gonna have a forum? I, I guess, yeah, I mean, in COVID times, it's so.
That looks so beautiful is, is like, it's half the battle, that to engage people in reading.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
So, I mean, I can't read, I don't read insurance policies, I can read zoning ordinances, and most people blaze over for zoning ordinance stuff, and now it's starting to sound like zoning ordinance stuff, so we need to have it laid up, maybe have pictures of ground mounted and the tracker.
Yeah, right, I think you're right, because, and especially these days, is, uh, even people who might be motivated to come may not come.
Or may, we're motivated, I want a learner to read it and make me send this comment, so they don't need to come.
Right, they don't need to come.
Well, all we want is feedback.
Okay, so, uh, I'll, oh God, I gotta get you, let me make sure I.
I, I did take notes, but I, I lost it when I had to do what, uh, what Rich was saying, but I have.
So you know what?
Good notes on, on everything, but I'll send it to David.
Did you take notes as well? I got, I think it had pretty good notes.
So what I, what I'll suggest is that I'm gonna send you my notes, and we'll have redundancy if you send your notes.
I wanna send my notes.
And Vicki, you send your notes.
Yeah, and I did mine, I think, so it's not horrible.
So, um, yeah, so you'll get three things and.
I'll put them together.
You'll put them together.
Verge them together.
I think I'll do, do your best.
Yeah, I can do it.
So, and then, and then you'll send those to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, and, and then we'll be aiming to have it in a, get it into a form, once we, we're gonna have to go through all that again, and we're gonna get feedback from Mitchell, either by the end of that meeting or the following meeting, we should have it in a form where we can send it to people, and I would say this time, we need to have a really short window for people to reply, uh, which basically is what they do anyway. They either are gonna reply or they're not. So, because otherwise, we're gonna get to the beginning of October really fast.
So when you say send it to people, you mean like, put it out, you mean?
Like we did with the other one, I mean, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, it's, I have more stuff, but I think we'll just wait.
Isn't any of it good stuff?
What?
No, it's not good stuff.
Okay, then I have it.
It's horrible stuff.
Um, I did send you Hebe's request to become an alternate, uh, she was on earlier, but she's left.
Oh, but she couldn't take it. So what I, what I would say to Hebe is what we generally do, she should, um, attend, uh, as many consecutive meetings, you know, until we see that she's gonna show up regularly and participate, um, and so that we can, you know, look like, like everybody who goes through this process.
Can I, can I, can we go offline for a minute, since we're talking about people?
Well, I don't know whether we can, I don't think we can.
So, not, that would be like a non-public session?
Yeah, we, we cannot, we cannot do that, we don't have the authority.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
Well, this, okay, but I, okay, one thing I would like to say is that I think it should be generally distributed that we are looking for alternates, um, and that we should let other people know as well.
Okay, I can put that out on this server, planning board.
Planning board is looking for alternates, fine. Okeydoke. Okay, so you could tell, you can tell Hebe.
Yeah.
That that's the standard operating procedure.
And I'll put it out on this server.
Okay.
And, and I, I would note that Hebe has come to several meetings.
Several, it's different, it's different than, most people want to be an alternate, um, historically, we want to see them show up in a way that shows us that it's not gonna, well, I, I, it's not gonna, I'm gonna show up occasionally.
Or show that you have interest in one thing, but not, I'm not interested in.
Another, and so I'm not gonna show up for that. Right, and that we can interact and get a sense of how that person interacts with the board in the context, not as a member of the public, but in the context of interacting with the board. That's what we've always done.
Okay. I guess I'll say that's all, so it was strict or standard than, than you've done.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna be jerk, I'm gonna just say this so everyone can hear it.
Well, hold on, because I want to address that. And, and whose case was that not the case?
Let's see, I, I think of David Van Wee who came.
David Van Wee came to numerous, and he participated in the discussions, I recall that.
Yes, yes, I would say.
And Rich was also.
And, and Rich came to several meetings.
And you've been coming.
And I, I, I'm a.
So I would say, what, what, the one alternate did not go through that process.
I would say, I mean, I don't have a specific number for either for Rich or for David.
We don't have a specific number, it's at a point where, where the person shows up consistently, and we've interacted with them, and we're comfortable with the idea. It's how it's always been.
Okay, I'll apply my time, thank you.
No, you don't have to apply.
Bye, now. I would, I would say that Hebe has shown, uh, I'm, I'm gonna put in advocacy for her, she's shown consistent presence at these meetings. She's clearly helped us out by making that handout.
Absolutely, and, and I, I would say that this, she has now said she's interested, and this is an ordinary process.
Well, I think the one difference is that she's been a member of the public in the past, it's a different thing if you're on the, you know.
Exactly.
I think that's the real difference.
Once you say that you're interested in being an alternate, that's different than being, being a public. And that's pretty much standard operating procedure. And you wanted to say something, or you didn't?
I'm not gonna want to say anything right now.
Okay.
Um, although I do, but whatever.
Okay, so we'll leave it at that. And, um, it's quarter to nine.
Do you know anything good to bring?
I don't have any, I have, have the opposite of good, and I'll, I'll save it.
I have a, a, a question or a, a, oh, when we get this next draft back, can we get it in a, you know, Word document so we can play with it?
Oh, absolutely, anytime you want a Word document instead of a PDF, let me know. I typically send out Word documents because I know some people look at it on their phone, or PDF documents, because people sometimes look at it on their phone, and, uh, sometimes people, I don't know, older Apple machines just, you can't interact with Words easily, so I've always just done PDF because it's a, a common format, but I am very happy to send out Word versions, just ask, and I'm gladly sent it to you.
Okay, so remember, Vicki, John, Rich are gonna send.
I just did.
Oh, that was fast.
Oh, it was good.
All right.
It was fast, all right.
I'd like to take this opportunity, that was good work, and, um, I'd like to make a motion to get out of here. A second? Everybody's in favor?
Yes.
All right.
But before you leave, John. I have work for you.
Just, just leave your John Hancock here.
Yes, I need three signatures.
Oh, okay, that's not too bad.
The, um, Stevenson.
Right, right.